At this time, we'll open up the regular meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Ms. Baylor, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Dalton. Broadwater, sorry.
I understand you work part-time for the city of Fountain Valley. Maybe we can make that a permanent. Two weeks in a row, huh?
I apologize to everyone.
Fix that 12-year habit, right? It's been 12 years.
Are you going to call my name?
Mayor Broadwater.
Here. Okay. We had a closed session for the Garden Grove City Council and also for the successor agency. We had two issues. We have no reportable action on either issue. At this time, we'll have our flag salute and opening prayer.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your fate. Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you bless all who assemble here this evening and the work we seek to do. Help us to work in harmony as we seek to make the best decisions for our community. And Lord, grant that in serving our community, we may serve you. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Jones, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please face the flag and say it with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. Okerweke to make the special presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fatale. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to present the Business Spotlight, highlighting the accomplishments of local business professionals. This evening's recognition goes to one of the city's most prominent full-service window covering suppliers since 1980, Pringles, Draperies &amp; Blinds. Would Patrick and Pam Skinner, along with Dennis and Susie Krasinski, please come forward? Pam and Susie are the daughters of Larry and Carolyn Pringle, and the founders of Pringles, Draperies &amp; Blinds. Patrick and Dennis are their husbands, and all of them worked together to provide customers with quality window coverings in Garden Grove. The Pringles came to California in 1968, shortly after Larry and Carolyn became large distributors for laundry and dry cleaning stores. In a short period, they were able to open a handful of dry cleaning stores, but as the market changed, they were forced to sell all but two of them. The Pringles decided to take up drapery manufacturing and later vertical blind manufacturing, since many of the existing customers' homes and apartment complexes needed their draperies replaced. In 2000, Pringles Draperies &amp; Blinds moved from Anaheim, where they started their business nearly 40 years ago, and relocated to the west end of Garden Grove, a location they deemed fit for their business. Today, they have 20 employees, many of whom have been with the company for over 20 years. They cover both commercial and residential window covering needs in Southern California. Larry Pringle is still very much active in the business, whereas Carolyn Pringle is retired. Even Carolyn's mother worked in the business until she retired as well. In honoring Pringles, Draperies &amp; Blinds for their achievement and economic benefits towards this community, the mayor and city council would like to present Patrick, Pam, Dennis, and Susie with a gift for being the March Business Spotlight. Garden Grove salutes Pringles, Draperies &amp; Blinds as an industry leader and true business successes in our community.
We have Garden Grove Business Spotlight, Pringles, Draperies &amp; Blinds, Garden Grove City Council, March 12, 2013. Extremely heavy. Why don't you turn around, we have a picture taken with the floor that you stand in front of us.
One, two, three. One more. One, one, two, three. There you go.
I would like to say that the draperies in my front room are from Pringles. And they're really, after years, they're still good. They look like they're holding the wall up. Glad to have you here. Would one of you, or all of you, like to say something?
On behalf of Larry and Carolyn Pringle, and all of us here, and the staff of Pringles, Draperies &amp; Blinds, we thank you for this honor. The Pringle family moved to Garden Grove 45 years ago. Our family has grown up here. The three children attended schools in the Garden Grove School District. All three of us were married to our spouses at the Garden Grove United Methodist Church. And our brother Kurt started his political career here, running for the Garden Grove City Council.
Three times.
We're cooking three.
In 2000, Pringles moved our business to Garden Grove, and we've since been blessed with success and many wonderful customers and friends. As you can see, we have a special connection to Garden Grove, to the city, and we thank you again for your support and recognition, and look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we go to oral communications for both the agency and the successor agency, both the city and successor agency. I might as well get it right. I was, just the way Dalton would say it, you know, it just... Dana Mann.
Hi, my name is Dana Mann, and I've been a Garden Grove resident since 1992. My topic of concern is underage drinking at home parties. As a professional, I'm a consultant with USC, training teachers nationwide on a high school curriculum towards no drug abuse. I'm taking this hat off tonight in speaking to you as a parent and as a community member of Garden Grove. My daughter Shelby is a senior at Pacifica High School, and my son Gordy graduated two years ago from there. Teenagers by nature gain independence and experiment, which sometimes includes drinking alcohol. Teens will be teens, this isn't going to change. However, some parents feel that teens are going to drink anyways, and even though it's illegal, some parents would rather have them drink at their home where they can be supervised. A social host is an adult who hosts a party where alcohol is knowingly served. How many parents in this room have been a social host for a party like this before? That's right, nobody's going to admit it. A study in Orange County on the most common places where youth do drink alcohol, 74% of those who drink, 74, pretty big number, 52% sit at a friend's house, 24% at their own home, and only 1% at places like in the park, the beach, a car, because they don't want to get caught for that. In addition, teenagers use parents as an easy source for alcohol, 33% getting it from their own consenting parents, 20% from a friend's parent, and 25% at parties where they're drinking with other parents, in front of other parents. At parties involving alcohol, drinking games like beer pong are common, encouraging binge drinking, which is five or more drinks in a row at one time, putting students at an increased risk for a lot of other problems that are associated with drinking. How could a parent possibly monitor all the kids leaving a party where kids were drinking and make sure they are safe? They can't. To increase awareness on what's happening with this and come up with solutions, on April 27, the Garden Grove Drug Free Coalition is hosting a reality party for parents at home in Garden Grove, where teen actors from Garden Grove will also portray the typical house party scene. There'll be five 30-minute tours, each followed by a brief discussion to answer questions and ideas for change. I personally invite each of you and other interested parents and community members to attend one of these tours. I'm asking the city council to adopt a social host ordinance as an effective solution. A social host ordinance would provide law enforcement a powerful tool to address underage drinking. Currently, police officers can only break up the loud parties, but they're not able to hold the hosts accountable for that. Cities who do have ordinances like this in effect are able to impose civil fines to the parents or responsible adult, anywhere from maybe $250 to $1,000. Six cities in Orange County do have such an ordinance: Mission Viejo, Irvine, Laguna Beach, Laguna Hills, Orange, and just last month, Huntington Beach City Council adopted their social host ordinance as well. We're clearly lagging behind in giving our law enforcement an effective tool to reduce underage drinking at house parties. The benefits? Number one, it would hold hosts accountable and fine them for underage drinking, serving as a deterrent. Cities that have done this have found that people in violation, it usually happens once, and there aren't repeat offenders. It would reduce the binge drinking and driving under the influence, and it would also decrease the acceptance of underage drinking at house parties. I recently posted our neighborhood bulletin board asking for parents how they felt on this issue, and one parent came back with a comment, "Bad idea all around. Big mistake to introduce kids to alcohol. Parents are parents, not friends. We're there to protect them from poor decisions not to help them make them." So I have a packet for each of you to leave with you tonight. We will find a policy brief on the social host ordinance that strows a strong parental support in Garden Grove for this, with 97% of the parents, over 450 parents who were surveyed. We're in support of policies that do penalize adults for serving alcohol to minors. So Mayor Broadwater and city council members, some of you have children or even grandchildren that would personally benefit from this here in Garden Grove, and I'm sure that our city has many important, city council has many important issues. I do hope that you join me along with many other supportive parents in passing a social host ordinance in our city before all the after-prom parties, graduation parties in June, before we continue to put our youth at risk by not taking action to provide a safer environment for them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Peter Katz.
Once again, I'm here tonight to promote the speaker series for the Vietnam War Museum of America Foundation. And as a founding member of this board, this is the third and last of our winter series of great speakers. Jose Ramos is the founder of the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day organization, and was the first to found this holiday in the state of California, and Garden Grove became the first city in Orange County to support Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. The speaker series, he will be speaking Thursday, March 21, 2013, at 6:00 PM in the Courtyard Center at 12/7/32 Main Street in Garden Grove. There are free refreshments there. It is a free event, and it's proudly sponsored in conjunction with the Vietnam War Museum Foundation of America and the Union of Vietnamese Students Association. They are the sponsors and are paying for this series, and we proudly support their efforts in bringing this museum to fruition here in Garden Grove. And please come out and support us there. And I just want to remind you that today, after all these years, there are still 1,666 missing in action, MIAs. And I bring this up in that just recently, this week, two soldiers were returned from Korea, from the Korean War, for burial back in the United States. And this week, North Korea has abrogated the armistice that ended the Korean War in 1953 and is threatening war against the United States, as ludicrous as that sounds. But war is an ongoing thing. And then just yesterday, it was announced that two Civil War soldiers were raised from the bottom of the Mississippi River that died in the battle between the two ironclad ships, the Merrimack and the Monitor, and they will be buried at Arlington National Cemetery. For Vietnam veterans, it's a constant struggle, but we have some great, powerful supporters today in the presidential cabinet. We have three former Vietnam veterans. We have Chuck Hagel, the new Secretary of Defense, John Kerry, the new Secretary of State, and we have Vice President Joe Biden. Here in California, Justice Eileen Moore, who was our last speaker, was the second lieutenant nurse in Vietnam, and today she sits on the Fourth Court of Appeals for the state of California. And she is a founding member and founded the Veterans Court to help veterans in their problems with the legal system here in the state of California. And we also have our Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez, who is now second in rank on the Veterans Affairs Committee in the House of Representatives. So for veterans, there is some outreach and support, and they will open their arms to you if you have veteran problems. So on behalf of all Vietnam veterans and all veterans in general, please support this effort. This is truly a monumental effort and will bring great pride to the city of Garden Grove once this museum is built. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Thank you, Mayor Broadwater, for allowing me to speak here tonight. First thing I'd like to do is to thank our city council for lessening the restrictions to our vendors doing business on Historic Main Street for our weekly farmer's market. The council has taken a great step towards revitalizing our downtown by waiving the $68.50 business license for the vendors through November 2013. These are exactly the kinds of gestures we need to attract more customers and bring in more people to Main Street. You guys, thank you so much. I've been reaching out to vendors who are doing business at farmer's markets and art walks in other cities, and many of them are ready to come to Garden Grove now. I'd like to set up a meeting with whoever is in charge of our special events for Main Street, I believe that would be Janet Palio, and try and get some more events going on soon. Now, this generous offer is really good for the farmer's market, but what about extending this same offer to our weekly Friday night cruise held on Main Street as well? I know that we've had the same vendors on the street for a long time, and I know that we can easily attract a lot more vendors if the business license fee could be waived for them as well. I'm happy to see, okay, let me stop right there. We need some more vendors, you guys. We've had the same ones down there for months, if not years. We've seen their products before. It's kind of getting old. We can really revitalize this by opening up, lessening the restrictions for the Friday Night Cruises, as we've already done with Farmer's Market. I promise you, we can turn it around and make it more successful. Please, please put this to vote. Let's discuss this further. Back to Main Street. I'm happy to see that our gym theater is almost fully operational now. I was at the gym this afternoon, filming my first movie, Waiting in the Wings: The Musical. Production may be finished in time for our third annual Garden Grove Independent Film Festival. I think the public would really enjoy watching a film about a musical that was filmed in the very location that they're watching the movie at. The film festival is scheduled for October this year, and I'm hoping that the city will be actively supporting the organizers this time. Once again, we have a great opportunity to attract a lot of out-of-towners, as well as for our own residents, to Historic Main Street. I'm here tonight, as always, to encourage our city council staff and various departments to do all that they can for our community, and as always, I'm volunteering for anything I can do to make Garden Grove a better place. Lastly, in local community news, the Garden Grove Historical Society has opened up a new attraction. We've got the Lake Lumber House finally open. It took a lot of money, a lot of volunteers to get it going. So if you've never gone down to the Historical Society, please do. We've got one more open attraction there. We're open the first and third Sundays every month, 1:00 to 3:30. Doesn't lead tours, only $5 donation supports the historic preservation of our town. It's something really cool in your community. If you've never gone out there, please do. And last but not least, I would have loved to participate in the Los Sanchez Police fundraiser today, but I only found out about it in the elevator at City Hall today. I would have loved to gone out there and supported that. Instead, I had lunch at Zlakets', and I got the best corned beef sandwich ever. So for you Grovers out there, take advantage of this month's special and get a corned beef sandwich at Zlakets'. Thank you and good night.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Last Saturday, I had the opportunity to go with some friends to visit the battleship USS Iowa in Long Beach. This is a ship that participated in World War II, and it has a lot of historic significance. It was used to transport three of our presidents, Franklin D. Roosevelt, Harry Truman, and Ronald Reagan, to various places around the world. The Iowa is one of the symbols of the power that we put together in World War II. World War II was a time when our very freedom was at risk, after the day of infamy, December 7, 1941, when we were attacked at Pearl Harbor. A few short months later, a group of volunteers flew off of the USS Hornet carrier in B-25 bombers, led by Jimmy Dolittle, and bombed Tokyo. There were only five survivors left recently, until one more passed away. Major Tom Griffin, at the age of 76, was a participant in that raid. Mr. Mayor Broadwater, I'd like you to close this meeting in his honor. Name is Tom Griffin.
You sure you have his age correctly?
I'm sorry? What?
You sure you have his age correct? I mean...
96.
96. You said 77.
I beg your pardon. Thank you. We fought through a terrible war, and four and a half bitter years later, we won the final victory. And one of the men who was assigned to track down the architect of Japan's attack on the United States was also recently deceased. Now, this man captured Tojo, who was the mastermind behind Japan's war with us. His name is John J. Wilpers, Jr., and he again also passed away recently. But it was after World War II ended that he was the one who captured Tojo. This coming Wednesday, that's tomorrow, at 11:30, I'll be going to Costa Mesa Community Center to join a large group of veterans, many of them from World War II, who has members of the Freedom Committee, go out and speak to students at high schools and junior high schools to teach them what they had gone through and their own personal experiences. And many of the members of that group are Pearl Harbor survivors. So I urge anyone interested in meeting these veterans, especially veterans themselves, to come to Costa Mesa at 11:30 tomorrow morning at the community center and have a chance to meet our heroes. Thank you.
Alicia and Linda, Relay for Life.
Hello, Councilmen and Mayor Broadwater and everyone's staff. Linda and I were with Relay for Life of Garden Grove. You've seen us before, but we're here to present invitations to all of you to come to our kickoff party, which is kicking off the year now, but it's going to be on March 20 at Mimi's Cafe with great brie appetizers, yummy appetizers with muffins. And then also, a cancer survivor's speaker is going to be there, as well as a visual, a video of Relay. What is Relay for Life will be projected, as well as tables going through different like stations of what Relay is about. And so we'd like to invite all of you to be there and just enjoy a night. It's from 6 to 8 PM on March 20. It's a Wednesday at Mimi's locally, again, in Garden Grove, giving back to a business in Garden Grove. And actually, the manager from Mimi's, he's a caregiver, and he's going to be doing a caregiver speech about how he gave back to a cancer survivor. So I mean, again, it's an integral part of just, you know, the community and just getting everyone involved, and Linda's going to just thank...
I'd like to take a couple minutes. My name is Linda Walkner, and I'm the event chair for the Relay for Life, and I'd like to thank Councilman Fawn for coming to our last informational meeting last month. It was great sharing with you information about our relay. So I'd like to leave you a little token of thanks for your coming out and supporting us. Thank you.
So please come on March 20, Mimi's Cafe. We'd love to have all of you come. Bring your family, you know, your friends. It's, you know, family-oriented, and it's just going to be a lot of fun, and just giving back to cancer patients and their families in Garden Grove. So thank you so much.
I have no other cards. Anybody want to speak? Harry... Anybody want to speak? Hearing that, at this time, we will close public oral communications and recess the city council and go to the successor agency.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call the March 12th meeting of the successor agency to order. Madam Clerk, will you mark everyone present? We've already done oral communications in conjunction with city council. We had several closed session items, but no reportable action, consent items. Just a few minutes, basically.
Move the consent items. Second.
Call the vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
No public hearings, no items for consideration. Any matters from members?
No.
If not, we're adjourned back to council.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll come back to the city council and go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6F be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Move the balance.
Second.
Go over the vote.
Motion to receive five yes votes.
Okay, we have no public hearings, no commissions or anything from the commissioners of committee matters. Items for consideration, that sort of got twisted there, didn't it?
Mr. Mayor, 9A is in agreement with ABM Services, and Ron Meisler is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you, for your consideration, agreement with ABM Services for the cleaning of park restrooms and picking up of the surface trash. Due to the shortage of staff, the division cannot keep up the same service levels that we provided to the community in the past. Therefore, staff is seeking to hire a contractor to free up staff members' time so they can address maintenance issues in the parks. This contract also includes locking up the restrooms at night. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council award a three-year contract to ABM Services Incorporated, DBA, ABM Janitorial Services, in the amount of $438,248, with an option to renew the contract for an additional two years, with an additional $25,000 for unforeseen maintenance issues, for a total of $513,248 for the first three years, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city and to make minor modifications as appropriate thereto. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
What time are they going to lock them up?
Dusk.
Dusk? Even if there's something, an event going on or that type of thing?
If we have the concerts in the park, we normally have other staff members on there to keep them open until the event's over.
What if we have ballgames and stuff going on?
If there's ballgames or if there's soccer matches, the operator of those sports events has keys to their restrooms, and they lock them up when they're done.
Any other questions for staff? Any discussion? Entertaining motion?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Motion to receive five yes votes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, no ordinance is presented, matters from mayor and city council. Councilman Derrick?
Yeah, attended the Central Garden Grove Little Leaguers this last Saturday, breakfast and opening ceremony. Great event, want to wish them all a great season for all the little leaguers out there. And with that, I just want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day.
Very good.
First, I want to thank Peter Katz for always presenting a good job on events for the Little More Museum. He's always there and always efficient about all the things that we do in the organization. And as for Relay for Life, I usually go to the big one for Susan B. Coleman, and I think it's really important that we support our city one, because it's more close-knit, and we see our neighbors, the people out there that we want to support. And also, it's really an awareness situation, we want to raise awareness. I always see people, and with all the amount of people getting cancer, it's a surprise that people who are unfortunate to have this disease, a lot of times, they don't know what to do, and they've seen it all the time, just like I have, and I'm sure that they would like information also. And I wanted to see if the staff could set me up to meet with Zach McIntosh, because I wanted that meeting regarding historic preservation of certain buildings in our city. I know staff is very busy now with the staff cut and the budget cut, but I just want maybe a 30 minutes with them. It's not going to be a long meeting. And that's it, and St. Patrick is coming up, another event for us to buy in Garden Grove and go to our local grocery stores and buy that big feast. I'm sure that former Mayor Bill Dalton is going to be very happy to celebrate St. Patrick Day. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you, sir. I just want to say thank you so much to Ms. Sharon Sunda, who invited me to the Seroptimus event last Thursday over at the Marriott. Seroptimus, if you don't know, is basically a group of very civic-minded ladies who try to forge and to garner the leadership from the youth ladies in our city for leadership and for the development in the future. And so the mayor and I, we had the good fortune of being invited and saw four extremely great ladies get awards of a thousand dollars per awardees to continue their education and to read essays that they wrote about what it means to be a leader. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the ladies who were there, who did a great job in presenting and for us to be there. Also, I want to say thank you to Peter for bringing and highlighting the speaker series for the Vietnam War Museum. As a Vietnamese-American and as a veteran, it touches very near my heart when I hear about these projects that we're doing. And I'll certainly be there on the 21st, and I'd invite the city to be there as well. So thank you.
Steve.
As was mentioned earlier, our Garden Grove Police Department has a Baker-to-Vegas race coming up, and they did a fundraiser today at Los Sanchez. I had breakfast there and lunch there, and it was busy all day long that I could see. So hopefully, that was a successful event for our guys and for Los Sanchez to boot.
How many people run in the race?
I don't know.
I don't know either. That's a long race.
Yeah.
And if I can just dovetail with that, sir, I think it's still going on till 8:00 PM tonight, so we still can make it, we go out there before then.
If I don't drag it on too long. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. I will, we are going to close the evening in the name of Tom Griffin, the fellow that was in the bombing of Tokyo. I mean, it was a great surprise for Tokyo to get that, because they had been told that no Americans could ever bomb Tokyo when they started the war, and within six months, Tokyo was bombed. It was quite a feat to fly those planes off of that carrier, and the B-25s, I do believe, is what they flew off the carrier. Also, and John J. Wilpers, is that his name? Did I get that correct?
Wilpers.
Wilpers. The gentleman that, I guess he captured Tojo, huh? Yes. Okay. I have two other people I would like to mention tonight that have passed away. Thomas Pinto, Panito, and he was a resident of Garden Grove for 40 years. He was 76 years old when he passed away, left his wife Barbara and Rozelle Melly, his daughters, and Jeffrey Williams, his grandson, no, Jeffrey Williams, it's not his grandson, it was his Tom graduated from Santa Ana High School, served five years in the United States Navy, and they have already held the service for him. But I knew Tom pretty well. His son and my son grew up together, both of them went to Garden Grove High School together. So anyway, I wish the family regrets, and I hope that they're doing well. And finally, I would like to mention Alice Lucille Buck, who has lived in the city of Garden Grove over 50 years, who passed away at the age of 87 this week. I had the funeral for her last Saturday, and I did attend. She was quite a lady, she was a very strong-minded lady, and she, well, let me tell you how strong-minded she was. She saw her husband for the first time, Mr. Roy Buck, the fellow in the blue suit down there, and first time, and she says, "That's the guy I'm going to marry." And he said, "Well, okay." So it all happened. I will miss, I will miss Alice. She was just a great person, and I close in all those names tonight. Thank you very much.